Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the January voting meeting of the Executive Times of School District Board of Directors. We need to announce that we were in executive session prior to this meeting discussing litigation and mediation, and will be in executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel issues. First on the agenda, Mr. Joe Way discussing technology.
Hello again. It's only been a year. So it's been a very interesting year, and you should have a board report from myself and Dan, sort of encapsulating the whole year and the one-to-one implementation. I do have some usage statistics in there, talking about some of our damage and our storing implementation. We've been pretty busy fixing Chromebooks, but again, we have 1,360 or 13, over 1,300 Chromebooks deployed in students' hands, and it's been a lot of fun. Dan has been working, I've rarely seen Dan this year, he's been out in classrooms, K-12, implementing and supporting iPads from K-6, and the one-to-one in the high school, and he's been doing some piloting of Chromebooks in the junior high as well. So he would be the best person to talk to if you have any questions specific about how it's going in the classroom, how it's going with students. I talked a little bit about SchoolG is in there. SchoolG is our new learning management system that we're using this year. We started using it in the senior high school. SchoolG is a platform for us to build classroom courses in, for teachers to have their syllabus, to have ongoing assignments, to communicate with parents, to communicate with students at this point, and to sort of build a curricular record for the classes so the kids get enrolled in the class and they get into SchoolG and they can kind of see a live syllabus. They can also do assessments and do, you know, look at videos or go back to previous days' assignments if they have questions or things to sort of look over. How many teachers are currently using SchoolG?
SchoolG, I'd say a little under 15. We had the pilot and we're rolling it out in the next in-service. We got it in, I think the board approved it in the first, one of the first school board meetings for the new year. By the time we implemented it, it was October, I think is when we officially got all the data from SchoolG set up and that enrolled. So we have our child development, the course of action with that, and the training modules for the teachers that'll happen on February 12th for all the high school teachers.
So we took, from the starting school till now, to develop a core of leadership, sort of leader teachers who were using daily, who were our piloting teachers from previous years with the Chromebooks, so that they sort of were already used to using the Chromebooks every day and sort of taking it to that next level. And those teachers will be then sharing their expertise with their colleagues on February 12th in service, and the PD committee has been planning that pretty heavily. So the other thing to talk about is sort of what's next in our minds with devices and where we can see it going. We see the next step of implementation being moving down from 7th grade. So we would have our 7th to 12th graders using a device. We've been building a strategic sort of a leadership team at the junior high level. We've been sort of pairing that with the changes to the junior high schedule. Some of the changes with ELA, with the Language Arts and Math, the changing in time sort of makes it a relevant thing to do at the same time because we will lose some of the facilities. So by having, you know, English all year long, that'll affect the one computer lab we have. So by doing a one-to-one in 7th and 8th grade, it would greatly improve the ability for students to do writing and to do some of the projects in ELA and Math using the technology. So it's something we definitely would love to see happen. Again, we're coming up with a student handbook. The teachers are working on developing what it'll look like in the classrooms, some of the rules and guidelines. And then we would work with Eric and build an implementation timetable like we did last year and try and do it in our 8th grade and 7th grade orientation sessions over the summer. It is in the budget, and again, if it makes it through, it's something that we would sort of lease, most likely, do a lease rental, and move forward. And then our students would rotate through, they would have a device 7th, 8th, and 9th grade, then they would get a replacement at 10th, 11th, and 12th. So we've been at three-year lease rotation for devices. So I talked a bit about some of the damages. Our percentage of, we heard about 13% of the devices had to be repaired. About 9% has been break, 4% roughly has been warranty repair, things that would have failed, either they failed out of the box or they failed after a short period of use. That number is very, very common. So most districts, like when I talked to Wilson, the number of breaks in their first year was substantially higher. Their first year was 30%. And again, we're only halfway through the year, so I don't know where we'll be at the end. But 13% by now is, means we're probably in a familiar territory with the number of kids.
Joe, do you think this is, is this a durability issue with the machine or is it negligence? Or yes, yes?
Well, last year, we had a very different machine this year than we had last year. The machine last year had a piece of plastic over the glass and it, we just, they broke the piece of plastic that was over the glass and it was the same price. It's just, it's a combination of, you know, some of it is, you know, we're still at that point where our students have, let's just say 16 pounds of books, you know? And they, they just throw it, they look like they're hiking the Alps. I mean, they have all these books that come in, they're, you know, and some of them will stick the device in the bag, and they don't even think about it. And, you know, when we set the bag down or when we drop the bag in the classroom, then they open it up and the screens have been cracked. We made, we made sort of a midterm correction. We had to remind everyone that we want to carry the device in its case, we live in a parent case. We told them we didn't want it in, you know, a bag with other things just because of the pressure type of situation.
I yell at my daughter every morning to put her in the case, because it's beautiful case, but he's right. I mean, the packs that these kids are carrying is crazy. And if they're an athlete or something like that, or after-school activity, they got four or five bags.
Joe, would you make any recommendations about the breakage procedure that we have? Are you, now that you have more experience with the way the fee is used and what students are paying?
I mean, I think, one of the things that we saw is after we saw the breakage increase this year, we sent an email home to parents, students, we hit everybody with texts and emails about, do they have to use the bag at all times or the insurance isn't going to count? So after that happened, I had like literally 300 kids that day, they said, "Really, Mr. Wilczek? We really need to use the bag between classes." What we were seeing is they were using the bag to and from school, and they would carry the device in the hall. And we said, "At this point, as of today, if it comes in without the bag, the insurance isn't going to cover it, so they have to use the bags." And that, I mean, we asked all the teachers, and Mr. Kane asked all the teachers to reinforce that with students, if they come into your classroom without the bag, send them to go get the bag. So that's helped, I think. It's only been four weeks since we did that. I think the-
Oh, it's been a marketing period.
Yeah.
It has.
Okay. I think the breakage has lessened a little bit, so we saw some breakage errors. I think that's helped. We've also been a little more aggressive with insurance as to, is it negligence or is it damage? I do, don't, we're above that $10, like if we take the whole breakage, we're going to be higher than $10 at this point, so we would have to reevaluate. And we told, when we rolled these out, we said, "Hey, we're going to try and hold that line, we'll reinforce that with the parents and students. The better you treat your equipment, the lower that insurance will retain." So I think for next year, it would probably be more like 15, and we're still trying to look at the numbers, but it would go up a little bit. It's kind of where we're at. I think it's just education.
It's very difficult because if you look at these students, a number of them have iPhones or broken screens, and they don't even think twice about that, unfortunately. And they know now that if it breaks, they have to bring it to us because if, you know, if it's broken and long-term and they just show up and it's, "Oh, well, it's been like this for a while," or, "You know, I just didn't have the time to come to the Chromebook Center." You know, we've been really encouraging to get it fixed as soon as they can. Kind of replacing a screen, you know, and again, it's not about, it is about the money, but a replacement screen is like $40. And so we're not, you know, the $10 is really just insurance, and ideally, we're hoping to keep self-insuring. But we'll come up with sort of a figure towards the end of the year as to how much we've spent on negligence and damage. And if it's negligence, they pay the amount, and if, you know, more kids this year chose to not insure, and we're not really having any difficulty getting them to pay when they damage. So they are coming clean and paying, and, you know, and I think that's less of a problem. I mean, it seems, it seems like a lot, you know, to have 94 broken screens in half a year, two marketing periods. But like I said, it is on par with where other districts were in the first year while they're kind of easing in. Our 9th grade pilot was different, the percentages were lower, I think that was because it was unique, it was new, and everyone was really excited about it. Now we have four grades and we're going to have more people who are sort of indifferent to it, the technology. More of our time has been spent, again, with, you know, more of the family, home use kind of issues, parents who have rules at home or have different expectations for use of the technology. We've been spending a lot of time dealing with different families about how we can, you know, either help them come up with strategies for when they take our device home. Couple families don't take the device home, the students just use their own personal equipment at home. So, you know, that's, that's been the challenge. I think we've been spending a lot of time kind of, you know, working with folks. We are providing a filtered device. We started in the most restricted manner. Early this year, we talked to folks in another district in Brooks County that were like, "Well, we're just going to be, you know, pretty open, we're just going to do everything we want to do." And they've been ratcheting it down, and we've sort of been going the opposite way where we've been going from, "Well, we can allow this, we can allow that," and we've been kind of adding features after we feel that they've been tested and that they're safe.
I think one of the things that we didn't do this time, that we are going to do, this proceeds forward with the 7th and 8th, is we're going to meet and require a 45-minute session, again, with all the staff. This year, we had so many add-ons, it was three grades, it was 1,000 computers, it took us, I think, two and a half weeks every day, it would be eight to 10-hour days to roll them out, just handing into them. For next year, we really need to get them in front of us again, sit them down and go through the rules with the parents, using the bag, talk about the insurance, and really make sure they hear the whole message instead of just giving them the packet, take them and read it, really make sure we get it. And I think that little 30-minute or 35-minute spiel helps kind of understand the filters, understand our requirements, understand what they should be doing, and that the parent is ultimately the guardian of that machine and that they're, you know, what, how they want to handle it at home. And I think it's, we did that with 9th grade because the kids were younger, and if we do go to 7th and 8th, I think it's very important with those younger kids to really get in front of those parents and talk about how we're using it and talk about any of their concerns and fears that they have, and make sure they understand how the whole device works. I know as a parent myself, I want to hear that and make sure it's, my daughter in Wilson in 2nd grade has one, and I've never actually ever been given anything from them, and it's something that I've asked for, and I've talked to them about that during that, and I think they're going to do the same thing next year.
Because they have 2nd grade that are training responsibly?
Yeah, I already, that's probably true, and I'm hopeful that, I do fund the younger kids are actually, they value it, it's like, wow, this is a really, yeah, this is neat. Like, I don't have one of these at home. My mom went and bought me one of these at the school, so they do, in some ways, do take care of the equipment sometimes better at the younger ages.
What's the life expectancy? What do you guys think the life expectancy of this is?
Three years.
Okay. I mean, we were very, you know, we were very thoughtful in, and I spent some time with some financial folks trying to figure out how we wanted to lease these, the terms, and the manufacturer, if I remember right, the manufacturer would only lease them for three years? There was no, there was no residual value after four years to do the rental lease. So we're doing a rental lease, which means we're just paying, we're not paying the amount divided by three, we're paying, you know, the amount divided by three less whatever they feel they could get in the fair market when the device is three years old. So, you know, we will have some residual value in the device after three years to turn back in and pump into the next rent lease, so.
Yeah, my concern is we moved to the next generation, they've had so much success. When you talk about this kind of market penetration, if you cheapen up on each unit, the screen breaks easier, that kind of, you know, it's amazing what it does to your bottom line. It's not shocking to find that it goes that way.
One, the funny thing is the screen that we're using, we're sourcing the screen third-party. Now, my guys have become Lenovo certified, so we're actually a certified center now for these devices. So if something's been broken, they can log into Lenovo, like they can troubleshoot it, get the parts, and they ship the parts, even for warranty stuff, and we do the repair. But it's much cheaper to go third-party for the screens. And there's a company in Pittsburgh area that's sourcing the screens, they're about, they're about two-thirds the price of what they would be from the manufacturer. But from our very first device, our first users that we were using to our Dell Chromebooks, to these Lenovos, it's all the same part at this point. Now, you know, as we move forward, you know, they're changing the logic boards and some other things, but, you know, I think three years is probably, the Dells, I think, we were really hoping that when we went with Dell last year, that Dell would have a longer lifespan for their device. But it's funny, in warranty, they were not able to replace the device with the one that we purchased, they had already cycled into a new product. So we were getting, it wasn't a lesser machine, but it was an instead-of-a-machine, it was their sort of next iteration of it.
But you'll be collecting the units from the 12th graders-
Correct.
-and giving them to the 9th graders?
Yeah, we will be pulling, those are one-year-old devices-
Yeah.
...we're pulling and recycling them into lower grades.
But then those 9th graders, maybe in two years, will get a new unit? Because then, the three years is up, or how do you envision that?
Yeah, I'm, I have a, I have sort of a plot that I've been trying to figure out how to, so the lean year two, then, probably, the ones from our 10 years will most likely go to our 8th graders, so then they'll have them for 8th and 9th grade, and they'll get a new one at 10th grade. So we're just trying to maximize the life cycle so that we get three years, and we have minimal shuffling them around.
But three years is just a theoretical approach.
Well, three years is a, after the first year, they go back to Lenovo.
Oh, all right.
I mean, it's part of the problem with that.
At least the lease is up.
Yeah. And then, like I said, we're just renting them, so they go back to fair market value.
One, how's the functionality working held? How's the software working? Is everything going all that way? Are the teachers feeling like they're getting what they want out of the machine right now?
I've got more positive feedback with the Chromebooks than I've ever had. I'm a little stunned at how stable they are. They just work. I mean, they're just workhorses. They don't crash, and when they crash, it's 30 seconds to get back in. I, you know, we had the Chrome, we set up the Chromebook Center for students to come in, but nine times out of 10, it's not the device, it's just students learning from me or from our library there of how to do, learning how to use the equipment, it's really not the hardware. And generally, that is pretty minimal with their issues. Google Docs is very stable, Chromebooks have been stable. We had one issue with Wi-Fi at home. Of all those machines we rolled out, one student couldn't connect at home on their network, which is pretty unheard of because there's a lot of variability at home. It was the father had old equipment, and they actually had some crazy firewall that I walked him through, and we fixed it in about 20 minutes. That was the only one that we had to fix at home. It's, yeah, I mean, overall, the teachers have really, really been pretty favorable with it, they've been happy with it. They, they have them themselves, we gave them to them for this year, and they don't want to give them back because they're so light and they're, you know, they're an eight-hour battery. That's probably the one thing that we struggle with, is that students know these batteries last so long, and it was a requirement of the program that they charge them every night, but they, they get through two days without charging them, so sometimes they stretch that limit. But yeah, it's, overall, it's pretty good.
One, two things I wanted to ask about. Do you think we need to look into any kind of mobile power station or some kind of places, like a student in different classrooms where-
Yeah. So, so the beginning of the year, we ran into this issue, that students were sort of playing that gamble of, "Well, I, you know," and they didn't want to compare their charger with them. So, you know, when we had the teachers develop the handbook, they were very clear that they wanted them to have their charger, they wanted them to be prepared for class, and, but it wasn't out of the question for them to plug in if they needed to plug in. And our classrooms have enough outlets in most situations. But with that sort of, end of the first marketing period that you know that went out was, "You must have your device in the bag, and you need to bring your charger to school." Because what was happening was, kids were, they weren't prepared, they had 2% left, they'd open it up, and then they would go down to the Chromebook Center, and we were, we were giving them loaners. I mean, we were really trying to live on that model of, "If you need it, you need it. If the teacher's doing a lesson, we don't want there to be any downtime, we want you to have the device we want, we want you to have the device. So if it's not charged, you know, we're not going to dilly-dally, we'll just give you a device." And what's happening was, we were getting 30, 40 of those a day, and it just came-
We had like 10 regulars.
It just became nuisance, and it was like, "Bring your laptop, bring your charger, bring your case, be prepared," and, and some of that. So I don't know, maybe, you know, maybe after year two, maybe after, maybe next year, we'll have to kind of see.
I think one is the battery ages or something like that.
Yes.
How long does it take to charge?
About two hours for any hour of use. About two hours at zero, about 5%, you'll get about two, it's an hour and 48 minutes, roughly 45 an hour age, to get eight hours of use out of it. So it's not like, that's what we find, kids, kids, most kids, there's only four or five hours in a room, so you'll see two or three kids plug in, they plug in for 10 minutes, they get an hour of use out of that. Because it should, up to 80% of charge happens really quick, and the top 80% of the float charge in your battery takes that extra hour. What we found, and this is, I was going to say with the lease, that's one of the reasons we want to kind of lease these for three years, is that we want, we don't want to replace that battery at the end of three years, which would almost cost 50% of the cost of the machine, a $200 machine, the battery replacement would be $75 to $100. So at the end of three years, that battery still should be about 60 to 70% usable if it's maintained and taken care of. So you'll still get it, our expectation is about four to five hours at the end of three years out of them, which should be a full day of actual usage, in classroom usage, so we're hopeful. We don't know. We've, I've owned Chromebooks going on three years, my daughter uses it almost every day, and her machine after, after almost three years, still gets about seven hours of charge. I'm a little surprised, and I don't know if it's, it's just the way the battery manages it, it doesn't, it's just low power, it doesn't use that much juice. So as long as you take care of them, they do last.
And with regards to our wireless network, and with senior high, you feel like it's robust enough, and then with us now moving to the junior high, do you feel we're going to have to do modifications there, or where are we at here?
Wireless is sort of an organic kind of thing, it's always growing and evolving, and you're, you know, we always have to look at where, as devices evolve, I mean, some phones obviously have Wi-Fi antennas, and some devices have Wi-Fi antennas, they all have different ranges and powers and wattages, and, so there is money in the upcoming budget to do, I term it as density improvements. We have enough Wi-Fi coverage, it's just, it's just density. It's getting more gig connectivity to each access point, you know, because each wireless access point, you know, is going to have one gig connection, you know, back to the switch. And it's, you know, if there are 100 people on it, you're dividing that one gig by 100 people. So we're always looking at, in the wireless area, high-density traffic, like in common rooms, large construction rooms, cafeterias, places where they might go for lunch or for study hall. But yeah, so we, we are always sort of looking at that map and changing it, moving things and shuffling to try and get the best quality of service we can with Wi-Fi. And we will be also adding density at the junior high school. About every classroom at the senior high school has an access point, the junior high school, we're just short of every classroom having one, some of them share access points, and you know, there are some rooms that are sort of non-tech rooms that we need to have them, students are going to be there with tech. So what's nice is, this year, well, last year, the Fed changed the whole E-Rate program. E-Rate is basically a discount program off of the Universal Service Pact, which is on telecommunications bills. So we will, we are eligible to then apply for over five years, $600,000 in E-Rate funds, and it's matching funds, so we have to spend 300, I think it's 300,000, we have to spend 300,000, and then they'll match three. So this year, we have a bunch of projects. The IU is doing a county-wide WAN rebit, so all the wire, all the wire connections from here to the IU are all going to go from one gig to 10 gigs, and our, and our commodity internet is going to increase also. And I just got a quote for that, it looks like that, you know, will probably come down in cost substantially. Again, as you start getting bigger networks, the costs get a little lower because it's, you know, easier to make happen. So we're going to be upgrading some of our core switches to accommodate this new 10-gig network from the IU. So now all of our schools will talk across a 10-gig network, and then our data closets will talk to that 10-gig closet. It'll allow for some, some more throughput for our end users. So the switches for the 10-gig, they increase wireless density, and a new firewall that will accommodate 10-gig. Everything sort of came together all at once, it's all sort of in, and they've been bid through PEPPA mini-bid, which is all funding E-Rate stuff, and, so we'll now, all that will come to you next month, I think Yan said we're going to bring that February 9th.
Right.
So you'll see the contracts from the different vendors for, for those technologies at that February meeting, and we'll go forward from there. So, I mean, it is, to accommodate 1,300 devices, more than we had last year, we had to increase from 250 to 500 beds, and then next year, we're looking to move from 500 to a gig for our commodity internet. So that's our speed, that's the speed that we get internet from the, you know, from the outside in of Ross.
Any further questions?
Yeah, are we, do we continue to see increased classroom applications? I mean, do you see more, more teachers involved and more frequency?
Yeah, I mean, I was stunned, I pulled these numbers, I don't pull these on a regular basis, and since the second parent got up board, it was 100,000 documents created. That's created new since the start of school.
Okay.
I mean, that's a lot of stuff. And those aren't loaded, like uploaded files that were pre-created, those are new. So we are seeing a lot of that, we had a ton of really multimedia application uses that teachers have been using, we're getting more on board with SchoolG, so we're seeing that. I spent a lot of today, actually, where the teachers, building out their SchoolG classrooms so kids can go in there, they, they're actually building out, you know, a couple weeks out, so they can roll that out. At the junior high, our pilot teachers have done a great job, we have three teachers that are really diving in there, they've done extensive everyday classroom on the Chromebooks one-on-one, all the lessons out there, the kids can go back, when they're absent, the kids are actually going in there and doing the work before they come back in, that kind of stuff. So it's been really, the kids honestly find stuff too, and it's amazing what they create, some of the videos that they create, the tools they use, and they find extra resources. And we have a, the Chrome app store, they can submit, we manage that whole store, but when they find resources that they want to use, they submit it to us, we review them, we test them for a day or two, make sure they're safe, and then we approve them for them, and they found, we let them build that out kind of organically, so, you know, word spreads between them pretty quick, so. They've done a really good job. I learned stuff every day from that, and it's hopefully reciprocal.
Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Is that nice thing from the junior high up to the senior high, or are you, are you taking one to the elementary?
Right now, one-on is 9 to 12. We have a pilot at the junior high, but some of the equipment from the high school, the six laptop carts, didn't prove at the junior high, so we're doing some more at the junior high as well. At the elementary levels, we're doing really iPad implementations, so at the iOS level, we've been doing a bunch of stuff with that. And I think Lorraine had a presentation, and then when Chris moved out here, she did something with her.
But I haven't yet given you the figures because you just-
Oh, the figures? Those are, that is K-12, but that, there is very little, because the elementary kids, we really don't put it good because they don't have a Chromebook, that would be a lot of usage. It is, but the bulk of that, I would say 90, 95% of that is a high school. Or probably 80% is a high school, 20% or 50% is a junior high. But yeah, because they have that equipment, it's a lot more accessible. And they're, they're not just doing work, they're taking notes, they're keeping track of their homework on it, they're doing all kinds of other stuff, you know, they're applying for jobs, they're applying for colleges, it's more than just what we're giving them, they're taking and using that as their, what I call their business machine. So they have a personal machine, this is your business machine, it's not to check the personal email, it's, it's for schoolwork or for education, or getting a job, that kind of stuff.
And I want to ask you, Joe Way, how many people do we have working on just data entry to the state at the federal government, and the time that they have to spend?
Well, I mean, it's hard to say exactly. I mean, every building secretary is, has responsibilities for, for data, PIMS data, entry, withdrawals, attendance, you know, those types of things, demographics. I mean, I have two dedicated folks in my department that deal with sort of the brokering, updating, fixing, the integrity of the data, but I mean, it's, it's a lot. I mean, buildings have two secretaries. but, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot. I mean, billings have two secretaries, plus guidance secretaries, plus guidance. So, you know, it's hard to say exactly how many hours or how many people per week, but I know I have two full-time people dedicated, and I often get involved as well, and Sue Miller is active, and, and Don is active, I mean, so there's, there's a lot of hands, it's, it's a big initiative. PIMS is, man, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to keep track of sometimes, there's so many, you know, changes, and, and then once we seem to nail down a policy and how we're going to do something in our internal procedures, then it changes. So, you know, and it's, it's, it's demographics, it's attendance, it's health records, it's, you know, assessment, stuff going back and forth to, to PDE and EDURECT, and it's teacher effectiveness, and it's, I mean, so it's, it's, data is an enormous beast, and there are lots of, many hands in the pot.
The paper is certainly faster than one that was a hard copy.
But it's forever, right, on the data entry?
Any additional questions for Mr. Wayne? Mike, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I, I would just refer back to the technology committee, the committee meeting that's in November, where we talked a little about expansion of STEM program and some of the needs for that. And also, I don't know if you want to address, you still have an open personnel position that you're looking and trying to fill, you require a certain level of certification for that, and a lot of candidates come through who have, who don't have that certification.
Yeah.
But I believe that's still an open position.
And, you know, Dan and I, and it's difficult, you know, it's difficult to not have the staff, but sometimes it's difficult to have the time to find the staff. And so Dan and I just haven't had the time to sit down and really figure out, you know, you know, Dan is, he's not an administrator, but he's very integral, he's, I mean, he's almost, he's not my assistant, but he is my assistant in many ways. And this person would be, and I'm Dan, working very closely in the classroom, I can't emphasize how, just how important that is. Dan has earned the trust of our teachers, he's in the classrooms with them, he helps them build lessons, he encourages them, he's a cheerleader, I mean, he, he really does a lot for our teachers, and it's important. You know, part of not having the right person, you know, it's, it's very difficult to have the right, if you had the wrong person, it'd be really bad. And so, so that's why we're just, we're taking the time, because it is, it is such a critical, critical job, and we just want to have the right person there helping our teachers.
Bob, just one more thing, in those minutes, I know, did you talk at all about the upgrades to the teacher laptops?
In the, oh, I didn't, no, I haven't in the budget. Our, our teacher and administrative laptops were purchased in, our administrative laptops were purchased in ten, July of ten, and our teachers were purchased in July of eleven. We tend to, you know, of course, when you buy teacher devices, you tend to look for a higher spectrum than we look for for students, and that gets us the ability of it lasting as long as they have. You know, the teacher laptops are currently the same, very similar process to what's available today, an iFive, they have the same amount of memory that would be standard down. But, but our situation is, we're Windows seven, two versions of Windows behind, we're ideally looking to move to Windows ten with our teachers this summer, along with getting them new machines, because the machines they have are, we've replaced the batteries, we're starting to find a lot of failure. So now the components are starting to fail, and it's time for them to be replaced. So we will, we will most likely work with whoever the vendor is, we're doing with their one-to-one, and try and get aggressive with pricing and quantity, and, you know, it, it's so funny, you know, at this point last year, we were talking about a three hundred and twenty dollar device, and when we settled out in June or May, it was, it was, you know, sub two hundred dollars. So, some of those changes in price only happened within the last thirty days of, well, actually, it happened within the last week of the, of the process. So, that's why it's important for, you know, to stay on top of vendors and to make sure we always get additional quotes, even if we're on state contracts. It's funny, these Peppa mini-bids for E-rate, I assumed that all of the vendors that were on Peppa were just giving the same Peppa price quote, and it would just sort of be, well, which vendor do we work with? But one of them had a sixty-one to a hundred and two thousand dollar price range for identical products, and it's just hard to rationalize, is it really forty thousand dollars for the profit and networking gear, or were some of these vendors just getting high bids? But, so that's why, you know, the teacher laptops are something we're going to try and do this summer again, as, of course, as the budget comes together. And we're certainly aware of the issues with the state budget and funding, and we'll certainly do whatever we need to do to work through that.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you very much.
Dan, if you see me at the meeting, you'll see what I can do back in your door, that cigarette's good.
You gotta work on my life.
Next is the opportunity for a public comment, is there anyone in the gallery who would like to address the board? See, no one will move on to the three sets of minutes that we have to consider, accept the motion, accept those minutes?
Aye.
A motion and a second, are there any, is there any discussion or changes to the (inaudible)? Bring now, all in favor of accepting the minutes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair's his report?
I'm going to adjourn to court as stated in the-
Could you talk up there?
I'm going to adjourn to court for this one.
Second.
A motion and a second in discussion. Bring now, all in favor of accepting the report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two policies that do do some administrative grappling we are reviewing for the first time. Are there any questions on either of the two policies? Being the case, I'll accept the motion to accept those policies as a first reading.
Some of them.
A motion and a second, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move forward to the next meeting. Business functions, Dr. Hamburger.
Item seven A, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors awards the bid for the La Jet double stack gas oven to Greg Frubaker's Restaurant, including Incorporated, in the amount of eight hundred dollars. Frubaker's was the sole bidder.
A motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor of purchase, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven B, recommending that the Board of School Directors award the bid for the timber tree harvest at District Property located at five thousand, for a town pipe to Green Brothers Lumper Company Incorporated, and approve timber sales agreement in the amount of thirty thousand, seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second, in discussion. Those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven C, submission of the, recommending that the Board of School Directors approve the submission to the Berks County Tax Claim Office. Two thousand fifteen Saint Lawrence boro School Real Estate Taxes declared delinquent in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, sixty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. Collection rate was ninety-eight point seven-nine percent.
A motion, second in discussion.
Is this just one, is this, is this, is this just one, what, just the delinquent taxes, is this multiple?
Number of bills says fourteen, on the times we attach.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Bring now, all in favor of forwarding the Saint Lawrence taxes, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven D, submission of the two thousand fifteen Exeter Township Real Estate Taxes declared delinquent. Recommended the Board of School Directors approve the submission to the Berks County Tax Claim Office of the two thousand fifteen Exeter Township School Real Estate Taxes declared delinquent in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. The collection rate was ninety-seven point five percent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, in discussion.
And can you give us some information as to who owes this nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand, is it mostly businesses, or is it residential, or is it F and S?
It's, it's three hundred and fifty-five taxpayers. Possibly, I went through the list, about five I recognize as commercial. Their total's about two hundred and thirty-two thousand, and the rest would be residential, and not as corporate.
And from last year, how, how did the delinquent tax decrease, like, like from last year? I mean, when, when we had whatever it was that was delinquent, did the tax bureau, were they able to get some refunds?
Yes. You know, we had some larger delinquent accounts over the past few years, though, they paid up. I mean, there are a couple large ones, which happen year after year. But overall, the level of delinquent outstanding has gone down, because the larger accounts have been settled. But again, there are still a couple out there.
Thank you.
You didn't vote on that yet, I'm sorry. All in favor of forwarding the Exeter delinquent taxes on to the Bureau, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven E, audit report two thousand fourteen, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors accepts the audit report for the year two thousand fourteen for the Exeter Township Tax Collector Office.
Second.
A motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven F, approval of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen Preliminary General Fund Budget, it's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the fiscal year two thousand sixteen-seventeen Preliminary General Fund Budget and authorize the submission to the Department of Education on the required forms.
Second.
A motion and a second, in discussion. Bring now, I'm going to say something. You read the paper every day, and I recognize that the reporter has a requirement to earn his salary and report the news. But I, it always pains me when I see that Flint Valley taxes are going to rise ninety percent, and Brandywine's going to go up eight and a half, and ours is going to go up. Fact is, no taxes are going up yet until a final budget is approved. This is the initial blush that has been handed into the school board for working. No taxes are going up, in fact, we could just as easily say we're going to have a refund this year, from all we know about what the taxes, what the Exeter Board will read, but please don't poke me on that because-
You can say it, Steve, you supposed to ask ahead of time.
What I, what I am trying to point out is, this is a working document which will be called over the next six months or five months, and until it is finally approved. That said, all in favor of forwarding the preliminary budget, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven G, authorization, authorization to file for exceptions to allow tax increases above the index. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize the school district officials to file with the Pennsylvania Department of Education for exceptions to allow tax increases above the index, as authorized by the two thousand six Taxpayer Relief Act, amended by Act twenty-five of two thousand and eleven.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, in discussion.
Well, I-
Go ahead, if you do it this time.
I just want to say, to piggyback on what Bob just said, I, I think you have to realize that we apply for exceptions every year, we rarely do it, but what we're doing is holding all of our options open until we finally, until we are able to finalize a budget. And I think it's all, it's important to understand that, that this is really just part of the process. And, and the process itself, we, we've criticized the process since it's come about, where we're making decisions about things before we even know, now we don't even know whether we'll have a budget.
We don't have this year's budget yet.
Yeah.
We don't know what they're going to do with next year's, but by God, we'll have our budget in by June thirtieth, so.
I keep reading here the governor's speech.
And I don't think, I know in the last five years, we haven't used the exceptions, and I can't think of a year where we actually used all of the exceptions on the, at all in the fourteen years up until now, so.
And I think, and I think the problem is, the state hasn't even given us our fair share of the subsidy for this year. So, yes, we have to leave all our options open, because who knows what's in store for school district, who must have their budget done by June thirtieth. And God knows if we're even going to have last year's budget done by June thirtieth. And I would hope that the legislature would, you know, get working and doing the job with the people.
And the governors don't have to go to work too.
Well, the legislature has-
Both parties, both parties, Pat, all in favor of applying for the exemptions, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven H, budget transfers. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves budget transfers for the month of December two thousand fifteen in the amount of eighteen thousand, twenty-four dollars.
Second.
A motion and a second, in discussion. All in favor of budget transfers, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven I, resolution authorizing the intervention in assessment appeals case. And this is a resolution resolved that the Board of School Directors of the Exeter Township School District authorizes the intervention of the following assessment appeals cases filed in Berks County Court of County Police. Carbo Group Limited versus Berks County Board of Assessment Appeals, Berks County Real Estate Associates versus Berks County Board of Assessment Appeals, and Never Sing Realty Associates versus Berks County Board of Assessment Appeals. It further resolved that the Board directs its solicitor, John S. Mallsney Esquire, and its administration officers to take all action necessary to protect the district's interests in these appeals.
Second.
I have a second, I have a second, any discussion?
Bob, I have a, can we pull it out, I have a conflict with the car.
So we will-
They're the owners of the property.
It's Carbo Group?
Yeah.
It's number one.
Okay.
So, and at least people try and get more assessments, and, and how much, how much are they trying, are their assessments lower?
Well, the Board of Assessment did not grant them any reduction, so now they're intervening because they're appealing it, and we have to go through the process of getting appraisals done.
We don't have appraisals for the two, the last two properties, the Carbo one, they're, they're going on the, the bank sale, what they, part of the bank sale, but they are moving to prove this right away, so we feel that they're going to take it down to that amount, not be justified.
Oh, the two million or whatever they pay.
Great, they, they wanted to take it down to that amount, because they're already moving it, it's already worth more than that, so we see that as, as clearly one to appeal. And the other two properties, we need to be, part of the appeals, we need to intervene in those appeals to make sure that, that there's not a decrease in those properties, unless it's justified by the appraisal.
All right, thank you.
So, Bob, so the positive vote is to vote to intervene?
To intervene, to authorize Mr. Mallsney to intervene on our behalf at the assessment board, or the assessment appeals. So I am calling now for a vote authorizing Mr. Mallsney to represent us in cases concerning Berks County Real Estate Associates and the Never Sing Realty Associates. All in favor of those interventions, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, if you got the motion for Mr. Mallsney to intervene in the case involving the Carbo Group, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? So we have one extension here. The motion's carried.
Item seven J Sale of Student Desk from the One Room Schoolhouse. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the sale of a student desk from the one-room schoolhouse in the amount of twenty-two dollars.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And thank you, Dr. Bender. Personnel, Dr. Bender.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following terminations of support staff. Number one Dalton C. Tice and number two Randall D. Evans.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the terminations, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignations. List under Part B, number, support staff number one through three, extracurricular staff number one through three.
Second.
I have a second. A motion and a second, all in favor, I'm sorry, discussion? All in favor of approving the resignations, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following appointments of certificated substitutes. Aaron Brady, Brady, Nicole Gallagher, Aaron Russell, Amanda Miller, Mark Flum, Lynn West, and Allison Wilson.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, discussion? Yeah?
Good question, we pulled Aaron Brady out as a subject.
We'll do, and for purposes of maximum participation, we will vote on Ms. Brady.
Brady.
Brady separately. Any other discussions? All in favor of the certificate dated teachers, less Aaron Brady, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. All in favor of Aaron Brady, name certificate, certified, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following guest teacher as a substitute, Janet Baker.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving Miss Brady as a substitute, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following appointments of extracurricular staff. Melissa Prati and Colin Kent.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the appointments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the leave's absence listed under Part D, certified staff and support staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of approval, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the change of status listed under Part E, certified staff and support staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the changes of status, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I move the Board of School Directors approve the following staff conferences listed under Part F, number one through five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All voting in approval of the staff conferences, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Bender, and Mrs. Cutler's student functions.
I am here just reporting the field trips within the sixty-mile radius. I believe... I move that the following field trips, which are beyond the sixty-mile radius, be approved in items one through three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C I move that the Board of Directors approves the adoption of the settlement agreement and agrees to pay for one legitimate educational tuition expenses not to exceed twenty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars plus related services, two extended school year program not to exceed six thousand three hundred dollars, and three attorney fees and costs not to exceed three thousand dollars as defined by the agreement for student two-one-zero-six-two-one in a form acceptable to the solicitor to settle all claims raised by the student and parents and authorizes the Board President and Secretary to execute that settlement agreement and agrees on behalf of the district.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of approving the settlement, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have just one comment about the student forum that I guess it was the last week before Mr. Kane suggested that because we were having difficulty getting students to come in the late afternoon or evening to participate in the forum, that perhaps we might want to consider seriously having meetings at seven-thirty in the morning. Now, most of us are semi-retired, so if seven-thirty in the morning sounds like a reasonable idea, I think I'd like to pursue it.
Did you define most of us?
Most of us that come to student functions, to just to show.
I think Mr. Kane was inviting you all to come to the actual forum, student forum, which is, the next one is February twenty-sixth at seven-thirty in the morning. I think that this is, isn't that?
Yes. Thank you.
Seven-thirty in the morning. I love that. How we did everything except for that.
I thought you were up beginning the afternoon.
No, actually, we're finished with that one.
Don't worry, what date is this?
Friday the twenty-sixth of February.
All right.
We're getting kind of footwork either.
Okay. I know that Mr. Kane might be a little stretched, a little stretched.
I would drop my seventh grader off at junior high office.
Well, you're in, well, that's good. All right.
Complete with breakfast.
Oh, that's good.
For us.
And anyone else that would like to join us at seven-thirty on February the twenty-sixth? That will be great.
Breakfast.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Curriculum programs, Mr. Dizinger.
Our last meeting was on January the fifth, I believe most of us were in attendance. So, you know, I, I want to thank the Board for their interest in curriculum. This last, this last meeting, if you were not there, we had a presentation from Dr. Elizabeth Lambie, who is a curriculum person from the Hamburg, Hamburg in the school district. And Dr. Lambie gave us an overview of the educational system in Finland. It's created a rather lively discussion. I personally think that these discussions, although academic in nature, I really think that they're healthy for us as a, as a school district. I think we need to continue to examine all aspects of our world and to stay on top of those things. And, and then to write, I actually, I don't believe we finished, there was a presentation that Dr. Davis was going to do on the highlights of the Every Student Succeeds Act. But we didn't have time, we didn't get to that. Were they, or were those the highlights?
That was it. If we can continue with that at the next meeting.
Right now, our next meeting will be February second.
Was that the committee report or curriculum program?
Programs is, programs is...
Okay, anything from curriculum?
Through the textbooks. That was the curriculum we had talked about.
I, I do have a question. Can you bring the, the student scores next to the next quarter?
I didn't bring those yet. Tom, like the correlation between the grades, I do have those.
So you can bring those to the next?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dizinger. Technology Committee, Mike, I'm going to give you a chance, but you've already had your time, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. BCIU, they have money now. So they're paying their people's travel, they pay back the eight and a half million dollars that we, or... You know, all but two million, we borrowed around twenty million dollars to keep it functioning. They also got increased money for pre-K counts, which a portion of that is coming to us. Well, I won't tread on your report then, so, good deals. Athletic Committee, Mr. Dizinger.
All right, I'm going to ask you to bear with me because it's been a very successful year so far. I'll start with wrestling, the team currently is eighty-two. They're ranked as high as number eight in the state, number three in the district. I think we've been all over the front page of the newspaper, particularly with their performance this past weekend. They won the BCI individual tournament for the first time in school history. They also won the Saucon Valley Tournament, the Conestoga Valley Tournament. We've had a number of champions. I went to a wrestling match for the first time in about thirty years earlier this week, so, two things. Number one, I have to always remember to take my bleacher seat because those bleachers are not comfortable at all. And number two, it's weird to have that single light over the mat. Have you gone, anybody been to a wrestling match lately? It's very different than when I was in school, to have this big light that sits over the mat and the rest of the gym is pretty much dark. So, it's a little hard to see, but anyway. To single out a couple, a couple of athletes, Brett Colt, he is ranked number four in the state right now. By the way, I'm going to jinx all these guys, I'm going to tell you what their rank is, I'm going to tell you they're going to do better than that when actually get to states because I've seen them wrestle and I've seen these kids running through my neighborhood for years. So, I know that they're really committed to the program. He is, he just won his third county championship, he was voted the tournament's outstanding wrestler. Austin DeSanto, actually, the big news at this tournament was somebody actually took him down and that was news. You know, that was like the first time all year this kid's actually even been taken down in a wrestling match. So, he's ranked third in the state, he is currently undefeated this year, he won his second county championship. James Hartness won his first county championship, he's ranked twenty-third in the state. Tyler Begoli, whose mom, I believe, teaches in the district, he won his first county title and he's ranked fifteenth in the state. Dennis Karas is ranked nineteenth in the state, he won his first county title. And Oscar Daniels, who wrestles at two-eighty-five, won his first county title. In his match, it was one-one, they went into overtime and he pinned the kid from Wyoming missing. And I believe there was a picture and the kid from Wyoming missing was just like, are you kidding me? He's laying on the back, he was just like, really? I lost this match, so congratulations to him. The boys' bowling team is currently in first place with a Division One record of eighteen-three, twenty-one to three overall. Boys and girls swimming, both teams are currently three and two in Division One and four and two overall. And on February third, do we know what February third is? It's National Letter of Intent Day. Exeter School District has currently thirteen students who are committed to either a Division One, Division Two, or Division Three program for National Signing Day, which is kind of cool. That means that all these athletes are going to move forward in their careers and play sports at the college level. So, we have, I'll just read very quickly, Elizabeth Kemme in swimming going to Southern Georgia University. Alexis Gunderson soccer going to Southern Louisiana University. We all know where Michael Manit is going, Penn State University. Nate Weber football, Cornell University. Brett Colt wrestling, Franklin and Marshall College. Hallie Snyder, Allison Snyder, girls tennis, basketball, school plays, all that kind of stuff. Loyola University and Miranda Alvin is going to play field hockey at Lock Haven University. They're all Division One schools. Division Two Leah Franklin, girls lacrosse at Millersville University. Annabelle DiStefano field hockey, Newberry State College. Anybody know where Newberry State College is? It's in South Carolina. It's a liberal arts college in South Carolina. Trent Groff swimming at Westchester University. Division Three Alexis Einzig, girls lacrosse at Allegheny College. Jordan Talford, boys lacrosse at Salisbury University. And Scott Schaefer wrestling at Ewingburg College. They will all sign their letters of intent on February third. I'm sure Tom will have a whole big shindig going on at the high school, but congratulations to them, to their families and their coaches.
It's at three p.m. in the auditorium on February third.
It's kind of cool.
Thank you. Thank you. Legislative Township Liz, I met with the township yesterday, the authorities that beat. And we basically went over what we've covered before. I explained why each of the fourteen sites that I've reviewed are of some problem with them. And then they said, well, we'd like to do a joint facility. And I said, that's just splendid, only where to put it. And... And they said, well, we don't know yet. And so then, they said, well, we may have a answer after the next meeting, which was, I was meeting with them at three. After the four o'clock meeting, we get, we're going to know what we have to do with our facilities. So that will be published Monday and I will attend that meeting. And then I'm sure immediately after that meeting, I'll know exactly where we're going to build the bus barn and everything else, but that's where we're at. So, I wouldn't say progress has been made, but time was put in.
I hear they want to improve themselves.
No, no, that's not what a joint facility is, we don't do that behind the, so. Public relations, Mr. Dizinger.
Very briefly, in your packets tonight are your hard copies of the staff directory for 2016. And it's time we'll take a new board photo with Dr. Hamburg and whoever the new person is. I guess it makes sense to wait until you appoint someone. So perhaps...
Since the appointment is imminent, it sounds great to be by us on the court. Thank you, sir. BCTC, Mr. Dizinger.
Uh, no, we're, we're doing that.
Facilities, Mr. Brady.
Yes. I'd like to recommend that the Board of School Directors authorize the district administration to seek proposals from architectural or engineering firms for a district-wide facilities and long-range planning study.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And another note, we will be having a facilities committee meeting. Stay tuned, it will be emailed out to the specific date or secretary or name of Mrs. Cutler.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Pisa, old Brian Pisa, Audit Committee. Permit?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Payment requests?
A payment request, a request that we pay our bills for up until January 2016 for a total list of payments from the general fund of one million ninety-four thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-two cents from capital account for twenty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and for the Awatton Creek Elementary School, twenty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents.
Your second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? In favor of authorizing payments, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Phillips, Superintendent.
Yes, sir, thank you. I have three items to discuss tonight. One, you alluded to a grant, a pre-K grant with the intermediate unit. I'm pleased to announce a partnership with the BCIU regarding a recently awarded pre-K count grant. The structure of the program is centered around the concept of being a district-hosted program. It can be described as a partnership program to serve eligible pre-K students within the school district boundaries. The ultimate goal of the grant is to provide a program that improves outcomes for children and families within our school district. And I'd like to add special recognition for the hard work and effort to pursue this grant to Mrs. Soonquik at Awatton Creek, and that is where the program will be situated. I would also like to recognize the Senior High Science Olympiad Team, which placed third overall, second among Berks County teams. placed third overall, uh, second among Berks County Teams in the Berks County Invitational Science Olympiad. Uh, first place, Anatomy and Physiology, Taylor Klein and Alexis Jaskonic. First place Dynamic Planet, Sarah Andro, I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, and Christine Beal. First place, It's About Time, Amrit Chenhook and Gabe Shuka. First place Protein Modeling, Christine Beal and Sai Kurapati. Second place Bridge Building, Amrit Chenhook and Gabe Shuka. Second place Experimental Design, Gabe Shuka, John Kim and Sophia Scovoria. Second place Fossils, Christine Beal and Sai Kurapati. Third place Air Trajectory, Amrit Chenhook and Gabe Shuka. Third place Geologic Mapping, Christine Beal and Sai Kurapati. Third place Disease Detective, Taylor Klein and John Kirchner. Third place Astronomy, Akhil Anapenene and Sophie Scovoria. And third place Invasive Species, Jason Koch and Sof- Sophia Scovoria. Uh, the team will compete in the Central Eastern Regional Olympiad on March ninth at Coatsdown University. Congratulations for the students' accomplishments. And then one note, um, due to the early forecast for a heavy snowstorm this weekend, please refer to the district website for all game-related postponements and cancellations. A decision will be made, and all parties will be notified as of Friday at noon with respect to Exeter Township School District Buildings being open this weekend for community events. Thank you, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other issues to be brought forward to the Board?
Um, it's the charter petition, and we need a date to our interview of support candidates.
Okay. I would like to present a motion in the, in the absence of any money coming from the state. We opted to reduce our payments to the charter schools so that they only got the amount of money which we, uh, generated from, um, township residents or other tax purposes. Uh, since we now have money coming in from the state, it is, I would consider it appropriate to, uh, start paying as, uh, as necessary. Uh, this precludes, if we don't start paying, the, uh, charter schools can petition the Department of Education, and it will be withdrawn from any monies we have due from the state. So I would much rather have Ann being able to, uh, verify the amount being withdrawn and by writing out a check instead of, uh, depending on the Department of Education to decide how much we would pay something. So I would entertain a motion to authorize Ann to, uh, pay charter school monies as they are due and to pay any additional that, uh, might be overdue.
Just move.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
So how much money are we talking about in that payment to Ann? Do you have an idea?
About a hundred and seventy thousand.
Is there any additional discussion? All in favor of, uh, the charter school payments being brought up to date, uh, and paid from here on out, please indicate so, we say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What was the?
Uh, it's a selected date to interview board candidates.
Okay, I said in the first week, or the first week of February, we have to interview candidates. Uh, Tuesday night is the Curriculum Committee meeting. Thursday night, I have a, uh, kind of, well, I, I would do away with that. Uh, so far Wednesday night is out, Tuesday night is out, so we basically have Monday and Thursday night.
Monday night is negotiations.
Monday night is negotiations, so I'm giving you the choice of two, Thursday or Friday evening.
The fourth Thursday would be.
The last week of January?
Well, no, I'm saying that would be an alternative.
Uh, we'd be rather consider the last week of January.
When was the deadline for the application?
January twenty-fifth and Monday.
With the way they're coming in, you'd have to.
Never received any.
I mean, we have, I thought you said we.
Because we in state show.
She expressed it.
So, I'm at Tuesday, the twenty-sixth?
Do you get how, like, in business, right?
Tuesday, twenty-sixth of January? Does that meet everyone's schedule?
That'll give you time to just pay all the, uh, applications.
At what time?
Um, six-thirty unless we're overwhelmed, how's that?
Yeah.
Have we advertised yet?
We advertised last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Is it on our website?
Yes.
The twenty-sixth is on the website, it's on Facebook, it's been tweeted, it's on.
Is it?
Yeah, six-thirty. Twitter was down today, you know. That's what it is.
I guess people don't mind it, hey?
I think it was you.
Alright, the, uh, I've just been informed that the twenty-sixth is a STEM meeting.
Our junior high school.
So, is, thoughts on the twenty-seventh?
I've got a June operating for the evening, I would not give. Unless, I could send my audit in.
What?
Audio. Probably. No, I think we already did that.
Um, why don't, we have a curriculum meeting on the second, but if we could, uh, do it before the meeting, that might be a resolution.
Yeah.
And I'll advise you what time, when I find out how many applicants we have, and we can, uh, lay out the.
Would, would some people be at work? I mean, if they were, had a full-time job, they might be out at five o'clock or something.
Who, who are we talking about? I'm talking.
Someone that might be, someone that might be a candidate.
We'll make concessions to that. We'll make arrangements of this. Everyone will get interviewed.
See, February second?
February second night, the Curriculum Committee.
We also have a forum that, like, to the.
Yeah.
If, if we continually, would it be, do we have a record of everyone who's applied for a, an opening on the board? And, and would it be possible for us to reach out to them and, and, and let them know, we probably have a record of the email.
Well, what I, what I recommend is, uh, we all reach out to anyone we feel that is qualified, uh, that, I, I'd really like to see some without a political agenda, I'd like to see someone interested in, uh, education instead of their party. But other than that, uh, there are, anyone seventeen or older, or, I think seventeen, eighteen's age.
Eighteen.
Eighteen years of age or over who lives in the, uh, Township of Exeter is qualified to serve.
As a township or the school district?
Perme?
If you're resident, it's always.
Well, that's right, we can have, like, somebody from St. Lawrence, too. So, so, uh, if you know anyone who's, uh, reasonably qualified that's not a one-issue person, please, please recruit them if you can.
So, and, and we've started now on the dates, so the twenty-sixth.
We're going to have it on the second, the same night as the Curriculum Committee meeting.
Okay.
But we'll probably have it at, uh, five-thirty, if we only have one candidate, yeah.
That would be a tough interview, but.
Doesn't, I'm not gonna accept second best.
It's like, it's like running unopposed, and you wonder why.
Alright, are there any other issues to come to put to the Board?
Just to that point, if you have one candidate, is that just an automatic appointment thing?
No, we'd have to vote on it.
Yeah.
Because, uh, we don't want someone so qualified.
Just, just a real, I don't know if you guys caught it in the paper, just a, a quick FYI, Otto Voight, who is a member of the Ullinburg Board and currently serves as the, uh, State Treasurer for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, has announced his candidacy for, uh, Pennsylvania State Treasurer. Just thought that was an interesting move.
Proceeding, was not endorsement of any candidate, or it was paper. All in, uh, I'll take a motion for, to adjourn.
Something of information.
We are adjourned.